Defend the legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which has been established, one nation, unregarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tony, can you take us to a floor, please? Aaron, there's the President, Councilor Hexton.
President.
Councilor Hendrickson.
President.
Councilor Quaid.
President.
Councilor Heim.
President. Thank you. Next, we have public discussion for any items that are not listed on the agenda, but I'll also let you speak if you have something to say that's on the agenda. Give you five minutes. Tony, do we have any correspondence?
We do not.
Next, we have the consent agenda. We have the January twenty-seventh council meeting minutes, February tenth council meeting minutes, executed claims from February eleventh to February twenty-fourth of this year totaling seventy-eight thousand, two hundred sixty-one dollars, thirty-three cents, and then resolutions twenty-five dash ten conflict of interest resolution. The conflict of resolution, I'm sorry, conflict of interest resolution is for our Councilor Hexton, who will occasionally step in and do some road work. And so this is something that any of us, if we do work as an employee, we would have to have that laid out in an actual resolution. Is anybody curious about this? Do you want me to go on and read it? Okay, thank you. Counsel, is there any of these items that you wish to have pulled? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Follow to who the consent agenda?
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Full support.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments from the council? If not, all those in favor of the consent agenda as is, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, say nay. We'll move on to department reports. We have the utility updates. Are you presenting tonight? I don't see Mr. Downey.
I can, I can present.
Thank you, thank you.
So, utility updates for February twenty-twenty-five excavating contractor permits. We currently have seven contractors permitted in Rice Lake for twenty-twenty-five. They're listed on our website for residents to access if they're looking to connect to the city sewer and our water repair and existing service level manhole repairs. Justin Shindell's inspecting manholes and working with Shane to identify and prioritize repairs, replacements and ordering of parts for manholes along Second Avenue North and First Avenue North as part of the city's ionized prevention program. Monopole, Shane, Tony and Robin attended an onsite pre-con meeting with Baylor Dieter from S E H and James Mellon, a contractor from Vinco. On behalf of Horizon, Horizon is looking to upgrade their platform and reduce their number of antennas from twelve to six while removing eighteen cables running up the tower and installing two hybrid cables, power and fiber combined. Tony verified with the city attorney that this change out of equipment is within their lease agreement, and they are not adding to the load to the tower. The work expected to begin March third in twenty-twenty-five with the completion date of March twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you, Councilor Hexton. So, any questions from the council? Not?
I'd like to present on the sewer and water comparison, too.
Sure, go for it.
So, twenty-twenty-four sewer and water comparisons are as follows. For January, the water rebuild customers is one million, one hundred eighty-nine fifty-one. Water not accounted for in B is two twenty-seven, even, two hundred twenty-seven thousand, even. The fire department water used is three fires. We had three fires. Total water consumed is one million, four hundred sixteen thousand, fifty-one. The water build comfort systems is one million, seven hundred and eleven, five hundred and forty-three. The water differential for that is two ninety-five, four ninety-two, and the net loss to the city is one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine. The sewer that we build customers is nine hundred and eighty-six thousand, two thirty-seven. The zone one meter reading is five hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred, or nine hundred and thirty-eight. The percentage attributed to listation number one is seventy-one point nine percent. The zone nine meter reading is four hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and eighty. The total reading is nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighteen. The percentage attributed to listation number nine is sixty-nine point six percent. Listation one reading is seven hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred, and listation nine reading is six hundred and seventy-seven, six hundred. Total from W L S S D is one million, three hundred ninety-seven, nine hundred for a sewer differential of four hundred and eleven, six hundred and sixty-three. These get harder to see every year.
Thank you, Councilor Hexton. Are there any questions from the council?
I just wanted to clarify one thing I see on the top. It should actually say twenty-twenty-five sewer and water comparison, not twenty-twenty-four.
Okay.
I'll get that fixed.
All right, thank you, Tony. Moving on to council reports. Councilor Heim, can we start with you, please, Stephen?
Sure. I really don't have a lot to report. The only thing that I wanted to bring up is a resident brought up a concern to me about our veterans memorial park and upkeep on it. Was wondering who was going to be doing the upkeep. I indicated that it would be the city. He wondered about possibly using volunteers, veteran volunteers, or anyone that wanted to volunteer. I asked him a couple of questions about that, you know. We don't have lawn mowers there. We don't have snow blowers there. So, any volunteers would need to bring their own. That kind of took him back a little bit, but just wanted to bring his concern to the council.
I could ask a follow-up question on that. Did he, did he have a concern that there was something that was not being kept up, like it looked shabby, or?
No, his concern was he didn't want his money being spent for that, even though he is a veteran. I got the impression he didn't like the park at all and didn't want his tax dollars paying for upkeep on it.
Okay.
But I let him know, we did not create the park. His tax money did not go towards creating the park, that it was the honor guard that took control of all of that, led the, led the charge, as you will. So, he liked that piece of it, but he didn't want his money spent on upkeep.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for handling, just answering the basic questions for him. Sylvia, if you like, I just have a question about that, about having volunteers. If someone gets hurt, they bring their own equipment, but they get hurt. Is there a liability issue to the city then? At this point, you've not looked at volunteers to do that. Like you just pointed out, it gets a little more complicated. And with, with us just hearing about this now and discussing it now. I didn't know if they would be ruling on it or not. Not, not in the past. It hasn't been discussed. So, this will be the first time that we're really opening this up. And I think Tony's been here this one out and maybe get back to us to see if it's even a possibility to sometimes getting those volunteers to stay with it. It can be difficult, too, so we kind of get at a few different angles. But certainly not opposed if we can make it work. It's a great idea. And so, if we've got one person that would like to sign up and help out.
Thank you.
Was there any further questions from the council for?
I have talked to people, too, in the past, and expressed interest in going over there and doing cleanup. And I said, well, absolutely, if you're, if you're over there enjoying the park and there's garbage, which is common, you'll have garbage falling on the park. But go ahead, do that type of thing. There's probably no order. So, by, you know, city law, but personally, I don't see where, it's not going to take a whole bunch of time from our employees to go over, take care of that. It's not a big area. They already take care of the city park. And it's just, it's another city park.
Thank you. Councilor Quaid, we'll move on to you.
I don't have a whole lot either, other than just attended a couple of meetings, the planning zoning meeting and endemic meeting. Lloyd?
Councilor Hexton?
No, I, I don't have anything. I'll defer the time back.
Councilor Hendrickson, you have something to say over the weekend. Can you tell us all about it?
I just had a huge conference over the weekend. I was out in Plymouth and met with a whole bunch of like-minded officials and got to learn a little bit about how local government works and interacted with a number of different people down there. So, it was a two-day conference, was out there all day Friday and half a day on Saturday. And so, had a lot of city business, politics to do in the last couple of days. But it was very, very worthwhile to learn a little bit more about how city government works. So, it was very beneficial for me. So, thank you.
Yeah, it was very interesting.
Yeah, really fun. I got to meet some people, too, from other cities that were about the same size. And it was really, really neat and beneficial.
So, just going to bring up a couple of things. Once again, my notes may seem long, but I find it better that I write them down right away, whether I had a meeting or not. So, some of this stuff, it's just something that I did or didn't do. I brought up before a fitness campaign that Tony and I had been off and on meeting with Blue Cross Blue Shield. This fitness campaign, it was an opportunity for Rice Lake to partner with Blue Cross Blue Shield and whatever other partner we could find and put like an exercise pad in the park or in some area that was easy for people to get to. This exercise pad would have stations that people could move around and do different exercises, working different parts of the body. There's maybe something to pull yourself up with, or there's platforms that you could hop up on and hop, you know, whatever it could possibly be. It would be choreographed with music, so you could have your phone and it would have your music and maybe tell you what exercises that you would be doing next. So, it was, it was a fun idea. But the match that Rice Lake would have to put into was just way too much. We can use that money for, for other things. There's still some benefits of these that we could see, and that potential would be, it would be free for people to go and work out and have a place to work outdoors. And of course, you would have to work out when it's below zero because that's when you put on your weight, right? It's when it's below zero and you stay inside and you eat treats. But we, we did let this opportunity go. At some point in the future, maybe we'll look at it again. I, I don't know. At this point, it's, it was just too much for us to take on that, that burden of the, the cost sharing.
One, yeah, suggestion if we want to look at it again in the future is maybe applying for C V G money? And if we would get a match, or some of it anyway, from Blue Cross Blue Shield or any other agency, maybe we'll go through.
That's a great idea. I was asked before, Tony, and maybe you remember, I was thinking a match was like a hundred grand. I mean, it was something really expensive. I was like, it would take a lot of partners.
Yeah, I think, I think that was right. What it was, was a hundred.
Yeah, that's a lot.
That, that's a lot. We need a whole bunch of people.
Yeah. I don't think we'd get a hundred from them.
Okay, I did recently sign and go over the aware policy. Now, this is nothing exciting unless you're all about safety. And what this is, is it's a safety policy that I review yearly. I go through it with Tony. We make sure that the policy is pertinent, is it up to date? We're actively working on preventing workplace accidents. And so, we do have a safety committee made of employees and administration that meet quarterly. We, they, they, not me, I don't. They will go through a checklist of just easy, common sense things that can be a hazard for employees, not for residents, employees, even though residents would definitely benefit. But this is for our employees. Things that could have caused an accident. It could be slipping on ice. It could be ice buildup on our metal roofs that could all of a sudden come down at an inconvenient time. It could be all of those things, common sense things that our staff looks for. We're not trying to be perfect, of course, but we're just trying to identify those areas that are just so easy. And then they have an avenue to get things corrected quickly. So, at these meetings, as soon as they bring up a concern, you've got the city administrator with the pocketbook. She knows, you know, hey, can we afford this, this repair? Can we afford it? They will know right then and there whether this is feasible or if we need to budget for it or for what. This does not take the place of the daily morning safety meetings that the, the guys will often have with their supervisors. So, those happen besides this. These are more grounds related where we've got staff from each building or each site that Rice Lake owns, and they'll identify areas of improvement on those properties. Let's see. Okay, Prindle, Prindle Road. So, Prindle Road is a road that was left off of our phase two of our broadband build out. And it was left off because when we were applying for a grant for phase two and submitted our grant, this grant is then reviewed by other carriers. And these other carriers, they could look at our map and say, well, Rice Lake, I see you're submitting a grant for this area, but we're building out that area. You have to remove that road from your grant. And that's exactly what had happened. So, we were asked to remove our old Jean Deluth Road, Jean Deluth Road. And when we removed Jean Deluth Road, we did not think about Prindle Road. Prindle Road is a dead-end road that comes off of Jean Deluth Road. And when we removed Jean Deluth Road, it left this Prindle Road not being built out. I had been contacted by a resident at the time, several months ago, actually, and they had asked, when are we going to get broadband? And so, that's what made me look at this. My first step was to check with Lakewood Township to find out, hey, is MediaCom going to come and service this road? We, we took out this road because of your application. When are you going to service this road? Well, they confirmed that they will not be servicing any part of Rice Lake. And so, that was out for MediaCom to service Prindle Road. I contacted C T C, which is our current carrier in Rice Lake, to find out if they were thinking about somehow coming back and getting Prindle Road. They could build through the woods. I don't know. I was just checking. So, they had definitely stated that they had no interest, no financial ability to build out Prindle Road. Tony and I then had a meeting with MediaCom and asked them, would you guys be willing? We know it's not part of your current grants, but would you be willing to build out Prindle Road? And what they had said was that right now it is technically still under C T C's name. C T C actually would need to contact deed and get them removed from their map. And then when that would happen, then that would open this road up to become a freebie where any carrier could pick it up and build it out. But then there's still the piece of, how are we going to pay for this? And so, we were guided to talk to the residents about something called the line extension application. And this is actually filled out by the homeowners themselves. They would submit the application and then it would be processed. And then it could possibly get a grant to be able to build this, this road out. So, we did have a meeting with the residents. We had, I, I don't remember, maybe four or five that submitted their application right then and there. So, that's, that's great. And now, we're, we're in a holding pattern. I've asked the residents to contact the city and hear something from this grant application to see if it, if it worked or does anybody contact you? So, this is a new process for us. This, this grant is specially for those roads where they're, they're just kind of forgotten. Every project went around them or neglected them for whatever reason. So, it's an opportunity for those dead-end roads, like in this example, to get built out with broadband. So, we'll see how, how that goes. We've started up the stakeholder meeting for the Rice Lake corridor. The part of these stakeholder meetings are also inviting businesses, residents, even residents or businesses that may be outside of Rice Lake that have an interest or would be interested in being part of a, more like an open citizen. Where you're able to participate in the construction phases of design and construction phases of the Rice Lake corridor. And so, if anybody's interested, I've got kind of a short list of folks that are willing to be part of that. But if anybody else is, contact me or Councilor Heim, also is one of the stakeholders. You can contact her or Tony Boondaw, if you're, if you're interested. I think the, the first meeting will be second quarter. We should have some preliminary designs ready by that time that people can review and have something to look at. But they're looking for input from folks that travel these roads, that, that road, that particular road. Last meeting, I had mentioned that we're going to be starting up a type of community talk effort with me and with any council members that wish to also be present. This would be an opportunity for you to bring to me any questions, comments, how we can do better. Anything you want to talk to me about, you've got my ear for that, that evening. The council, though not required to be there, they're absolutely invited. They could either come as a citizen themselves or to just hear what's going on. This would be an opportunity to just talk to me. If you want my ear, come talk to me. And, and without fear of being picked on or anything like that. I just want people to know that this is a time that we can be respectful with, with everybody. And if you have something to, to say, I want to hear about it. One thing that I, I've heard from a lot of people is that they, they feel like their government is so out of touch. And, and you know, maybe they're right. Maybe this is a time where people can feel like this is their government. Because it is. It's, it's your city. It's your tax dollars. You guys voted all of us in. And, and I, I think all of us are ready and willing to, to always meet with people. So, we just want to be open to that. So, that is March third, six P M, and it's going to be here at City Hall. There's other ways that you can reach out to any of us. You can email, call, text. I answer all of them. Right now, I think our emails online reach us individually. We do have to warn you that if you tell us about some kind of water leak, we may just send that appropriately on to city staff. But if it's something that we can certainly help you with, we will answer that ourselves. All right. Oh, let's see. One last thing. St. Louis County Deuce, Tony and I had attended that, must be a couple of weeks ago already, to talk about our bond request for the regional safety training center. Our request has been submitted by both the Senate and the House, and both Senator Hostile and Representative Les Nakar has supported our, our bonding request. So, we thank them for their, for their support on that. As far as the, the flavor in the air, it's, it's a tough, tough crowd this year. We'll wait and see what happens. All right, that was a lot, but I think that was, that was about it. Anybody have any questions or add-ons or corrections to what I just said? Okay, we'll move on. We have under new business. First of all, John, Lloyd, did you have anything that you wanted to address us on? I'll give you a couple of minutes if you have any.
I don't think so, no.
No. Okay. Did anybody have questions for, for John? Thank you, John. And Commander Rasch, did you have something that you wanted to share with us or you're just visiting?
Just, nothing, nothing new. There is, there has been a staff change, so that I kind of forewarned you about. So, Deputy Austin Wick is assigned to Rice Lake, and I plan on bringing him to create an introduction more formally at the next council meeting.
Great, thank you. Okay, we will move into a snow plowing and ice control policy. Excuse me, I had asked Tony and Shane to just pull something together about what, what is our snowplow policy? When do we send our guys out? How many inches of snow? Things like that. And so, they had quickly pulled some, some items together. And this may be a finished product, but it may need some tweaking. So, I, I hope that the council had a chance to review this, and we can certainly add more to it, or we can certainly take another council time to come back after we hear a little bit of discussion. But Tony, if it's okay with you, and I know you're trying to type up your notes, you let me know if you want me to read it.
No, it's fine.
Is it okay if I ask you to go through this so everybody could hear it? Is that okay with you guys? Since we've got the time. It's a short agenda tonight, so I'm like, let's just take the time. Go ahead, thank you.
So, this actually was a policy that was adopted back in two thousand and eleven, I believe.
Okay.
So, we kind of just looked through it again, added in something about smart solving requirements for our M S four permit, just so we're covered there, but I can read over it. The city of Rice Lake, Minnesota finds that it is in the best interest of the residents of the city to assume basic responsibility for control of snow and ice on city roads. Reasonable ice and snow control is necessary for routine travel and emergency services. The city will intend to provide such control in a safe and cost-effective manner, keeping in mind safety, budget, personnel, and environmental concerns. The city will use city employees, equipment, and/or private contractors to provide this service. This policy does not relieve the operator of private vehicles, pedestrians, property owners, residents, and all others that may be using public streets of their responsibility to act in a reasonable, prudent, and cautious manner, given the prevailing street conditions. Under dispatching, the city, to the best of its ability, will try to maintain the roadway during snow periods. Operations will be halted when it is deemed too hazardous for our operators and the public or if reasonable accomplishments are not being met. Snow events which occur during the night or early morning hours, plows will be dispatched. Weekend snow plowing will be handled if snow accumulations are three inches or more. Snowplow operations, generally, plow operations will consist of three phases. One, making the roads passable. Two, widening and sanding. And then three, just general cleanup. We're scheduled for snowplow operators. Due to budget and safety concerns, no operator shall work more than a twelve-hour shift in any twenty-four-hour period. Operators will take a fifteen-minute break every two hours and a half-hour meal break after four hours. After a twelve-hour shift, the operators will be replaced if additional qualified personnel are available. Traffic. The city Traffic. The city recognizes that snowplow operators are exempt from traffic regulations set forth on Minnesota statutes, Chapter 169, while actually engaged in work on streets, except for regulations related to driving while impaired and the safety of schoolchildren. Pursuant to this authority, snowplow operators engaged in snow removal or ice control on city roads have discretion to disregard traffic laws set forth in Chapter 169, except for laws relating to impaired driving and schoolchildren's safety, when in their judgment it is safe to disregard such laws. The privileges granted herein to operators of snow removal and ice control vehicle shall apply only if the vehicle is equipped with one lighted lamp displaying a flashing, oscillating, or rotating amber or blue light placed in such position on the vehicle as to be visible throughout an arm of 360 degrees. Weather conditions. Snow and ice control operations will be conducted only when the weather conditions do not endanger the safety of snowplow operators and equipment. Factors that may delay snow and ice control operations include severe cold, significant winds, and limited visibility. Use of sand, salt, and other chemicals. The city will use sand, salt, and other chemicals when there is hazardous ice or slippery conditions. The city is concerned about the effect of such chemicals on the environment, so operators go through regularly scheduled training of best management practices for winter fleet operation maintenance, including smart salving. Personal property. Mailboxes and fences damaged during snow removal will be evaluated case by case. Only those mailboxes and fences that were properly located and installed and which were damaged by actual contact with the city's equipment will, will be repaired at the city's expense. As snow is plowed from roadways, operators will try to leave as little snow as possible across driveways. City removal of this windrow is not feasible and remains the property owner's responsibility. Residents are also reminded that it is unlawful to plow or blow snow from driveways onto or across city roads. Residents must remove parked vehicles from city roads to assist in snow removal. City personnel may assist stranded motorists by contacting law enforcement, emergency personnel. The city will not attempt to remove stuck vehicles unless directed by law enforcement personnel to eliminate a safety hazard. Complaint procedures. Complaints will be recorded on telephone logs at the city hall or public works buildings. Halls requiring service will be transferred to a work request and forwarded to the appropriate supervisor for scheduling. Emergency complaints will be handled in an expeditious manner as resources are available. Deviation from policy. City supervisors may deviate from this policy when, in his or her judgment, it is in the best interest of the city or is necessary because of budget needs or other circumstances. Review and modification of policy. This policy will be reviewed periodically and take into consideration any comments or complaints of the last review and if any other factors affecting the policy or its implementation.
Thank, thank you, Tony. Okay, council. What did that sound? Any suggestions?
One, one question. I think I know the answer, just want to clarify. The 12-hour limit? And then it says that they will be replaced if others are available. What if there aren't?
Then snowplow operations will cease.
Okay.
John Hexton gets called.
Yeah.
I haven't done it though. The new grade.
Yeah, there we go.
See here. You know what, what made me want to bring this up? And there's, there's more to this policy than, than just this. Part of what I wanted to see more of was a clear map or layout of roads between city roads and county roads. Also, if there could be some type of online publication of when those snow events happen, what's Rice Lake's plan? Every once in a while, when I'm bored, I'll go on to Facebook and oh my goodness, I, I can't believe how many comments are out there. And, and people don't understand, and I think they don't understand because it's not maybe put out there. And so they make assumptions like the comments about why aren't they clearing out a road? What are we paying our taxes for? And they're blaming the city, but they live on a county road. And so it's, it's things like that where it's like just a little bit of education. So I may be losing on this at the end of the day, because people may not be going on to Facebook as, as much as anybody else, but I wanted to at least try. So there's more to this that's, that's coming. We're just not quite there yet tonight. But one of the, the comments that I had seen was this person, they're in the plow. Why can't they just drop that wing right now and just get it? They're right there. And, and so it's like, I don't know if they're looking at a City of Rice Lake plow. I don't know if they're looking at a county plow, but they're wondering, you're right there. Why can't you just drop the plow and just clean that up? And so I guess I, I want to see something where it's, it's maybe, I don't know, it's laid out that we don't just drop the plow for anybody. These, these workers are working under the direction of the public works supervisor. And they're not to deviate from their roads or, you know, I don't know how to say this, but maybe that could be laid out somehow in this. One of the thoughts that I had. One of the other thoughts I had, and this comes from a letter that I received just today about residents on Willard and Kingston being a little concerned where we've got an inch or less of snow and the snowplows going by and, and they feel it's a waste of city finances. We're not quite sure if it was snow that they were after or they were actually grading the roads, which is a different process done for different things. But I don't know if that needs to be laid out of like a grading policy or when do we grade or, I don't know. Some, just some thoughts that we could, we could certainly talk about. The mailbox policy is, is another one where I think our policy is online on what our policies, what the policy is, because you have to have a mailbox that is built to our policy before it's even considered in this personal property damage. So maybe just a direction of our policies online, so they know that they could go before it. I think that was, that was it. So council, if you have any questions or comments on what I just brought up? Need this?
It's just a, I mean, just a comment. I mean, we all know that it's difficult to please everybody all of the time, right? But, I mean, the city website is really a great resource to start, you know, people are confused on it gets plowed by. We have a map on there. I'm looking at it right now, as a matter of fact. So it's just, just important to folks for, you know, to, to utilize the tools that we have right in front of us that the city already does. So it's.
Okay. So Councilor Hexton, are you thinking that doing more with Facebook or with our Facebook page?
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, I think that's, well, just, you know, helping people be informed. For example, if somebody said, well, you know, why don't they, you know, why doesn't the city plow my road and it's a county road? You know, we, any of us would catch that, we could always point out that if they do that on a county road. But, or else just before a major snow event where we know we're going to have problems, where the guys are going to be stretched then. Maybe just post this map or put a link to it in the, in the Facebook, like in order in the Facebook page. So they can know who's responsible for plowing their roads. That's an idea. I don't know if this is overwhelming or just kind of a one-off where somebody was maybe frustrated about this last time or. We do have the windfall.
One thing I, I like is the fact that it states right in here, there are three phases to plow it. One is so you can get out out on the road and get to where you need to go, but that's just one small part of it. We also have to widen it.
There, there is another phase which happens at this time, you're benching the cul. That's where they're, they lift the plow blade and take a deeper cut into the ditch and that moves the snow that's at the side of the road into the ditch where you want it, improving its ability to melt properly and visibility. It, it helps tremendously when you have a lot of deep snow with visibility for driveways. But I think it, all in all, the roads have been in the last 10 or 15 years taking better care of than I, we all had to take, they're pretty good shape now.
I think we did a very good job in Rice Lake. We certainly could take them on a tour to Duluth.
Yes, yes. So please, come right up. I just have a question. Did you say that there is a map of the city and the Rice Lake City and the county? Well, it's because I know West Kilbury, it's just, I just know it back, but you know, even these people that complain about property, if the plow damaged the plowed, if they're calling you and screaming about it, they're probably calling the wrong person if it's a county road, right? But I don't know how to find that map.
So I'll, I'll show you after the meeting.
Okay, great. Thanks. So at this point, if there's anybody else that would like to comment, suggest, improve our policy? Okay. All right, we will move on. Did we, did we think that this was ready for approval or do you guys want?
I don't need any further discussion.
You're good on it? Ready for vote? Okay, all right. We'll go on. Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the snowplow, snowplow policy. Motion, please. So moved. All right, thank you. We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll say it.
Thank you. All those in favor of this snowplow policy, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, same here.
I'm sure we name our snowplow. Like a lot of names.
Oh, let's get names out there.
I've got names for it.
One question, I should have thought of this before we moved on, but what's the snow depth? You said three inches over the weekend, but what is it during the week?
Think, what did it say in here? Just that they would be dispatched. Snow events which occur during the night or early morning hours, plows will be dispatched. So we don't have specific guidelines in there, but generally what we try to do is the, the guys come in around five so that they can try to get all of the roads opened up before the morning commuters come out on roads. And if it's happening midday, they'll just go out with it. Look like there's enough snow to actually plow.
To actually plow.
Yeah. Okay. So it could be in inch, it could be.
Yeah, depending on what time of day it is, because you know, towards the end of the day and they're going to be going home, they might go out just to do a quick run through of the city and kind of berries on every storm.
Okay. All right. Do we have any unfinished business? We'll move on to the March calendar. Let's see, March 3rd is our community talk here at City Hall, 6:00 PM. The fifth is the community club. And that, I believe they meet here. The 10th council meeting here, 6:00 PM. 18th, planning and zoning here, 6:00 PM. 19th is Nick at 6:30 PM, and that's either online or in Superior. Great thought.
Next one will be, I think, in Gilbert.
Okay. On the 20th already is the Duluth Area Township Meeting at 6:30 here at City Hall. The 24th, 6:00 PM, council meeting here at City Hall. And the 31st, 5:00 PM WLSSD. And that is it. Any corrections or changes to the March 25 calendar? If not, I'll return a motion for dismissal for the joint.
Before we do, I'd like to just encourage everybody to come next, next Monday for that like a round, a roundtable thing, where there won't be a formal agenda. We won't, so it'll be very casual then.
I think someone's bringing treats. Are you telling them? Yes.
If you want to throw, if you want to throw tomatoes at them, please take them all with the can.
Actually, someone had said they were going to throw shoes. I think that was a presidential.
Wasn't there a pie? True, you said no lemon.
I, I did say, please no lemon.
Yes.
Chocolate.
Peanut butter.
Sure. All right.
Isn't that questionable to adjourn?
All right, thank you.